Nicole, this is Julia. Are you on screen as Dr. Nikki?
Yes.
Yeah, that's out of her.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do I stand in this place as like? I think the difference is by the same as America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty of justice for all. All right. Evening, everybody. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for December 2025. It's been still time planning committee. And we have, believe we have everybody that we have in.
Yep.
That noted who's here. And we have Nicole Carney as well, she is on the YouTube or Zoom, whichever happens to be. All right. So our first order of business, the November 13 minutes, take a look at them. I did get a chance to review them. Everybody get a chance to look?
Yes.
Any questions or such? I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 13, 2025. May seconds?
A second.
Negative, sorry. Do me. Any other discussion? Okay, all favor? They are approved. All right. So Julie, I see in our old business here, we have two things that are still going to be tabled to January. So that's either deadlines or January 20th, so they'll be well within our ability to deal with them if need be. All right. So that would be the Verizon Metro Palgrin and the Three Point Garden major subdivision. Well, let's do this. We have two things, old business here. The data center update amendment.
Yeah, sure, Scott. So at your last meeting, you went over the whole county planning commission review, your ordinance. And after all that discussion, it was determined by the commissioners that you wanted to update just the decommissioning language to add some provisions to more, to add more, let me rephrase that, to add some additional detail to the provisions, especially the last sentence on the second page on the upper part that says the decommissioning agreement shall include bond or letter of credit that demonstrates adequate financing in place for decommissioning. There's a couple of words in there. So that's where you guys are at thus far. So I've given you the draft ordinance that's ready to kind of send out there or adopt. But I also know that Robert Lovenheim had some comments on the noise, sound provisions that I don't know supervisor love not want to talk about that. Well, you had indicated some.
The port with our. Sound already is from the proximity to the corners of boundary line.
I think we talked about it, comporting with the standalone, standalone sound, right?
But you say that there was, it was more complicated than that, that there's a vibration, kind of low, like low frequencies that are not necessarily, you know, the standalone ordinance is like for loud noises, but it doesn't affect, it doesn't address like a steady hum, those lower frequencies are tend to be a real problem in data centers and in paperwork that you in here has got provision for that.
Yeah, the paperwork that I provided to the commissioners is from Penn Future. And I guess they consulted with an engineer and the engineer put together a complex analysis of and description of how to actually analyze these, these difficult defined sounds. And their recommendations are similar to what you have already adopted. For instance, there's a provision for as-built sound study. They have, you know, a preliminary study, and I think yours does too. You, yeah, if you look at your ordinance, A and B, those provisions are in there. Now, how they recommend addressing what they're calling tonal noise penalty is a little bit different from what you have in your ordinance. Currently, you have this octave band versus maximum sound pressure.
Yes.
Which I guess allows you to analyze each band. And then the like, it's, so that is probably good, it's good. It may just recommend potentially similar types of detail. I think what the group kind of discussed was maybe ask T and M what their opinion was on on this, since I think T and M might have had a hand in putting together the standalone noise ordinance. So maybe that interaction could be maybe described. I mean, what's your, that'd be my, I deferred it last time to John because I felt like, you know, I'm not a noise engineer. I thought Robert made some good points. I thought the commissioners made some good points. I think Penn Future makes some good points, but at the end of the day, I seriously would be experts, Dave.
Well, I'm not myself. I, I don't think I can shed any more light than what you already have there. The others who are probably more expert than myself, we don't have any sound engineers employed in our company.
Let me summarize what I felt was objection before the building is built or when it's resurfaced, it receives its CFO, I think you have some sort of complicated sound analysis is fine. Once it's up, as John says, it's almost impossible to find somebody who's going to come out and be able to analyze the sound that's coming from it. At the same time, what we do in the township on our ordinance, our noise ordinances, we measure with two scales, I mean, A scale and the C scale. And the C scale is much a wider band that includes much low frequencies in the north. And that we can do if there's a complaint. But to think that we're going to get somehow find a sound engineer flying in, flying in here from wherever he is, whether it's London or California, wherever, and do a sound analysis. And then the next time we have a complaint, do another one, I think is impractical. And as John says, not very possible because it's even hard to find anybody to do it. So I'm for saying the recommendations are fine to get the CFO. After that, I think we use our own sound analysis unless there's a real, a problem that we cannot solve. But I don't think that's going to happen since to get the CFO, they would have, would have to conform to everything that you're talking about in that ordinance.
John, you have any?
No, I think you make a good point. They do have to do the initial sound test. And if we limit the CFO on that initial sound test, when everything is built and up and running, that, that should give you the answer. And it would almost take a malfunction to cause it to exceed it after that point, assuming they ran the initial process properly.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Alita. Technical designs solutions out of Annapolis, Maryland. They actually do exactly that. So they can come out after the data center and before, but they could do that type of testing. So this is something that you can hire people locally to do. And it is done. So we've worked with them very closely and done professional sound testing. So we can know a lot about that, but you do have to outsource it quite costly. But they are professional and they are very good at what they do. So there are places and people that actually are local that do that.
They're acoustical consultants, aren't they? Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
So they do that, I believe. So it's not impossible.
It's not impossible. Yeah, I understand.
The real world, the, my research has shown that the real world effect, part of it is the low frequency transmission through the ground that people who live next to data centers experience, like their houses vibrating on vertical frequency. They, as they, the data centers will, they don't want to get a little bit, they won't. It's very hard to regulate that unless you, but it is highly annoying when those are red.
So what do we need to do with this, Alex?
I have the same sort of question from a procedural standpoint. I'm just curious, what part of your current ordinance, which you all have a copy of, you would like to edit? And how would you like to edit it? I mean, as it currently stands, you have a preliminary study and an as-built study. You have criteria for maximum sound levels, which references the, the chapter 10 of noise nuisances. And it full size of provision where this, where if there's any conflict between this section in your zoning ordinance, the chapter 10 noise nuisances, the provision imposing the more restrictive standard or higher level of protection shall prevail. And then it has a table with all of the octave band frequencies versus maximum sound pressure. And it's, it's not clear what, what, it's up, it's the pleasure of the commission, what you'd like to do. You know, option one is you leave it as is. Option two is you pick a part of this and make a recommendation on editing it. That's sort of why I felt like it'd be good to submit and futures recommendation because it actually gives you some alternatives to what you currently have. Like, for example, if we look on the last page four, you know, they have, that's another best recommended text that you could, that you could adopt. It doesn't have that table, but it accomplishes similar things.
I think one of my questions is on, on our ordinance, we're going to use the modern octave band filtering. And on page three, it says octave band and even one third octave band analysis can miss or minimize the presence of tones, which is why narrow band analysis is an important component of effectively analyzing and regulating data center noise. And because what, what I do, what they're saying is that a lot of the people that build data centers, they'll, they'll be, they'll be in official compliance with the ordinance if it's like opt for the A class. And, but they're still, you know, that's still low hum vibration is there. And, and they don't have to do anything to mitigate it.
But it's still nuisance.
It's still, right, right. But they, yeah, but they're within compliance. So I'm wondering why we just don't change that to the, or the narrow band frequency.
Bobbed. I'm okay with making whatever change that you recommend. I mean, that's a whole. What I don't want to, what I don't want to do is get, I don't want to get, I don't want to get bogged down. You know, it's perfect on the, you know.
Right. Yeah.
The good on the algorithm.
Again, they could go ahead and pass it and then tweak it or something.
I, I, I wouldn't mind so that we have something, so there's something there to work with.
Yep, I get it.
What's wrong with the recommendation by Penn Future? Page four.
Yeah.
Next thing to be, you know, something else.
Yeah.
They didn't know what we're talking about.
Right.
No, I'd be okay. And I would be okay with that. Yeah, to start.
Yeah.
No, but right, I want to make sure that there's something in place.
Right, okay.
That, that.
Yeah, I would be good with that.
Yeah, that would be, I think.
The start of a point.
Uh huh.
And then we can, with the option of.
Yeah.
Of revising it.
Mm hmm. Well, this has got the, this is used in the narrow band frequency.
Right, it is. Yeah, but I don't, like I said, I don't want, I don't want to miss out on having something in place.
Sorry. Can I, can I just real quick, I don't mean to interrupt Katie McCoffey. So. I'm just, I'm just asking a simple question. So you're saying that this data center is absolutely getting built? The one that they told us, wasn't?
Ma'am?
Well, I was just, I, it was just a question.
Okay, but we're not anywhere near part of that agenda. This is part of the, I'm looking up here. We, we are, we're always talking about the sound ordinance part of it. The data center ordinance part of it that we've been working on for quite some time. This has nothing to do with anything that's before us, okay?
I apologize because I heard that there was a sketch in the last, in the meeting last night. So I just was wondering if that's why we're updating.
It's a little further down in the agenda.
Okay.
But this is a little bit, this because we've been working on this.
No, I, I was just asking. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'd say we go with it. You agree?
Yeah.
Where it's.
But it should have, it should have that provision where we can, we can tweak.
You can always, that doesn't matter. That we can always, that's a legislative act and the supervisors can always send it down.
I mean, something, this, this seems easier, but.
Yeah, that, that's something that we can always do. There's nothing that ever sets anything in concrete for ever for all.
Because 57 decibels on the weekend is pretty, is pretty quiet.
Uh, I'm looking to see, is Nicole? Nicole, if you can hear, do you have anything to add? You good with that?
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Then that's, that's our recommendation then, Alex. All right.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. All right. Old business, five D sign ordinance update.
Yeah, I can take this one.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
But this is another one.
Another one is they keep getting around and massaging it.
Yeah, yeah. So this is a kind of a courtesy heads up from the board of supervisors as I mentioned. They did test this last night. This is a sort of a product from your joint session about six plus months ago.
Good.
So what the committee, which unfortunately David's not here, David, Mike, myself were on the committee. And what we did is we took a lot of stuff from your ordinance that you all put together, but not the whole thing. So this includes updated definitions. It includes provisions for prohibited signs. There's more prohibited signs now. Language for registration of signs, some criteria for non-comforming signs, some criteria for the, then a lot of criteria for the removal of unsafe unlawful nuisance and abandoned signs, limited duration signs, those like the construction signs or coming soon signs, those sorts of things like you see them.
Yeah, we've been talking about all those. Yeah. Okay.
There is also temporary sign criteria. Now, those are like the banner flags and, you know, some of those sorts of things. Those would be regulated differently under this draft ordinance. They also edited signs permitted in the R1, R2, and RC zoning districts so that there was a little bit more clarity with regards to uses that are conditional use within the R1 zones that may be more similar to things you might find in the ED zone. So there, it, it, it's hard for me to explain, but if you look at the, the language in there, I think it's pretty clear. And then they added the substitution clause. And they also added some housekeeping to edit your existing zoning ordinance to delete language referencing commercial zones and replace it with economic development. So I don't know that right now, this group is being asked to carefully analyze it. We're just giving you a copy to read through it. These are going to go to the county. They're also going to go to T and M for a full review. And in January, this group is going to have like a full in-depth analysis.
Okay, I was going to say, I was just about that, Julie, if you could put that picture that we get that on the agenda then for January. That'd be terrific. All right.
Yeah. And in the meantime, if you have any questions for me about this, this language, feel free to just shoot me an email or give me a call. But otherwise, yeah, it's a, it's a lot of great work. The committee did a lot of, spent a lot of time and put a lot of thought into this. And as did this group here during the joint session. So more to come.
All right, very good. Thank you. New business. Smithfield Gateway Sketch Plan. brought in center, yes.
Thank you. So I'm Kim DePetrus, developer of Smithfield Gateway. And we have been working on a development of a data center for some time. We put together a great knowledgeable team. And John Kotay and Ted Herbert from Langen are our engineers. Ben Muller from Ostagar is our acoustical engineer. I know there was some talk about that subject and Ben will be able to elaborate a little bit on his thoughts. Reader by design, Adam Zellner and Mike Duffy are our experts in data centers. And we've been following their guidance. We have a preliminary commitment from Mened for 150 megawatts, up to 250 megawatts. We're, we're doing a load study right now, but I have a very large deposit for that. And that load study will enable us to lock in an end user, okay? End users will not really talk to us until that study is complete.
What's an end user?
End user would be Google, Amazon, or people that actually build new use. We're not going to own the data center. We will basically work packaging this to sell to a major end user like those companies.
Okay, so you don't have anybody.
No, and we won't, we won't have anybody until the load study. And it was serious money, it was over a hundred thousand dollars to enter the picture. And we wouldn't have done that had we not had Mened give us a preliminary commitment that they can supply 150 megawatts that can grow to 250 in a few years.
Hang on one second, Jim. Yes, Robert.
Mr. Chairman, I think what Jim is saying should be emphasized that, because I've heard many complaints and controversy about this, with the assumption this is going to be built. There is no end user, there is no developer to build again. This is only, let's say, reporting on the research and the possible conformity of this to our laws, but nothing else.
I mean, that's what I gathered when I read through the material to the sketch plan. You don't have anything. You've got.
And, and nobody would, okay, until you get this load study, right?
And then why are you here?
Because one of the, these end users, okay, they're not developers per se, like what we've done over the last 10 years. They want things packaged. The zoning's got to be right, okay? They want to understand how you're going to build the buildings on what grades. So we're doing studies about that, okay? And most important, you have to demonstrate that you have the power with a completed funded load study. Okay, they're all the ingredients of doing this. So we have Langen doing studies on the grading, how these buildings would be supported, okay? We're, we're engaging in the load study. And of course, as you all know, this wasn't by right use before. But we understand all the controversy that is on data center. So we commend you for putting the conditional use process there. But we feel at the end of the day, we will be able to work and get a conditional use approved now here. So these are steps that we must take or the end user will not surface. And we're doing with experts in this business, okay? But we think it's a great thing for the township for several reasons. One is for.
Let's go back, let's take back a step before we get to how great this is for us.
Okay.
Let's go back a step. This, you're, the entire parcel of the Smithfield Gateway on that side is, what, 85, 90 acres and it's got.
It's 90 acres on that.
It's 90.
Left side and 30 acres.
And 30, and 30 on the other side.
That's correct.
All right. And, you know, we've done some reading on these data center. These places are looking at sites that are 800 to 1,200 acres.
That's right.
Is there any data center in the entire United States on a parcel this small and of a scale this small that figures different?
So, Mike Duffy, are you on the call with us?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah. So you're looking at data centers at different sizes for different acreage.
Reader by design.
Yes, Mike Duffy here from Reader by Design. We're the consultants here to do the feasibility for a development of a data center. So, yeah, you can look at data centers at different properties, at different locales, at different sizes. Even in the middle of the city, you can get a 50 megawatt data center there. And you can go as large as, you know, 500 megawatts to gigawatt in the larger parcels, parcels. So, yeah, there's different sizes, different fits for different properties. So, yes, there are different sizes for data centers.
Right, any of this size?
Yes, there are.
Where?
Uh, New Jersey, actually. So we actually developed a data center in northern New Jersey for, for, this is 10 years ago. So it was a bit smaller in megawatts, but it was in this, much smaller actually acreage than this one itself, so.
How about since?
Hey, this is a long, or 10 years.
10 years ago is a long time.
I can chime, I apologize. Scott, I could chime in for a second. John Kotay from Langen. We're currently working on, hi, how are you doing? Good evening. Uh, we're currently working on data centers in Secaucus, which currently right now being built multiple that are less than this acreage by far. We're talking about 10 acre sites, 15 acre sites for data center. So we have multiple in New Jersey, in Secaucus is an example, where they're being built on tracks that are a fraction of the size.
John, can you spell that place for me, please?
Secaucus, S E C A U C U S.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so, and these people, Reader by Design, they're experts in that business. So why do I think it's a, it's a great use? One of the things is, is that the ground in the back has tremendous topographic issues that were zoned for 500 residential units there. We have not been able to get any major builder to step up because the cost is astronomical of making that work. One thing for sure is that these users, for a prospect, for a book, they have tremendous purchasing power, okay? And they're based upon the work that Langen is doing in the grading, they can make that work, okay? And, and our plan, but by the way, is on the 30 acres across the way. We have some major apartment developers looking at that. One of the other things is, and what I, early on, the supervisor said to us, we want to make sure that the frontage of this development stays commercial. And that is exactly what our plan demonstrates, both on 209 and 447. These are relatively low traffic users, okay? And dealing with anything with close to 209, that's a good thing. There are also minimal support services, whereas with other types of development, there's heavy support needed from police, fire departments, et cetera. And basically, the support services are a lot less here. Maybe most important, the real, these buildings will cost a thousand dollars a foot to build. The real estate taxes, and we will, at a future presentation, have calculations for that. But it's tremendous, okay? So it'll be a major economic boon to Smithfield Township. And one thing we need to do here, okay, is create taxable income. You know, we have a problem here at Smithfield Gateway. And that problem is, you know, we went into this, we had no idea that these roads and everything were going to be as expensive. We've done well, we did get the first phase done. But right now, we can only develop and use about 20 of our 120 acres. So we are suffering because we cannot build. And we've had this conversation with. And we've had this conversation with MENED, they're being as flexible as they can be. But we have a TIF loan, which is paid, a TIF loan is paid by tax generation, okay? And that could explode, okay? We need to create taxable revenue for Smithfield Gateway. And this is one great way to do it that will have minimal impact to the township and great support services. So there are my thoughts about why this is a benefit. If you would, Mike.
Well, that's not a benefit to us. That's a benefit to the bondholders.
No, there are no, there are no bondholders in this project.
Well, whichever the TIF loan is, though, Jim.
It was financed by debt. It was financed by debt, okay? And the only way we can pay that debt, okay, is with, with tax revenue.
Well, if you want to talk about the tax revenue, the township was guaranteed whatever the flat rate was. And anything generated that would be above that would be to go back, would be to pay back whatever it was, the loans, the, whatever, whatever that happened to be. That's not general, that's not a benefit to the township. That's a benefit to you. Am I wrong?
The benefit to the township is to have a successful project that is creating other real estate tax benefits. And right now, we're struggling with that, okay? But fortunately, you know, some of the funders of that have been working with us, knowing that right now, Senator Brown is hopefully announcing a fund early next year that will complete the improvements on 209. And that will be Godsend to enable us to add more commercial buildings to this project.
Mr. Lowenhead, there's a question. Are you going to spot where you stop?
No.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Just a point of information, the data centers that were mentioned in Secaucus are right across the river from New York City. They're there because of the low latency between the transmission and the receiver. And this has been something going on for 20 years and building fiber optic lines that can close a stock purchase within a millisecond, which makes a difference when you're doing all kinds of computer trading.
Yeah.
That's over the location. I saw the map.
Right. Mike Duffy, would you like, before John reviews the plan, would you like to add anything to, you know, right now, what you're seeing in the industry? And maybe just comment on, you know, the position that we have to have all this stuff teed up to attract the end user?
Sure, yeah. Mike Duffy here again from Reader by Design. So yeah, as one person mentioned, yes, they are definitely having closer to proximity with the usage, definitely has a benefit. But there's also other uses for the data centers, especially for data storage themselves. It doesn't necessarily have to be for high latency, but that's why we did conduct a fiber study, which did provide a good benefit and potential for this site. So there's definitely a lot of usage, just having four normal data centers for a lot of data storage, so yeah. That's why we found right now that the site, it's very viable so far. And like Jim said earlier, that once we get the power study done, we'll have a, you know, a good idea of whether this site is truly viable or not.
Okay, so John Kotay, you've been there for a while with me and before me. And I know your company is active with data centers. Would you talk about the plan that we're showing? Particularly going into the work on what we call Phase 2B, which is along, alongside of Moser Center Road and also backs up to Music Center Road.
Sure, can I share my screen here for just some visuals on this? Okay, if you don't mind, I just, I'll send a request for sharing whoever's, can allow me to do that?
Yeah.
Billy is taking care of that right now.
Very good. Okay, so what I'll do is put up on the screen the overall site plan proper, layout that now includes the data center scenario. As most of you are familiar with, I'll zoom in down to the 209 corridor. You know, the St. Luke's is there, we have the Wawa that's constructed.
We don't have, we don't have a plan from John.
Hold on a second, I apologize. Let me know if that, I just tried it again a second time, let me know if it came in.
Yeah, I'm losing it here. There we go.
Okay, my apologies. So this is the overall site plan, conceptual site plan setup for the development that you've seen multiple times now. But I'll zoom into the front end just for a quick recap of the front end for folks that may, you know, that may be newer, looking at the site, understanding what's going on. So the original approvals that include the St. Luke's that's been constructed and the Wawa that's been constructed, those same parcels had additional buildings, a retail building and a restaurant proposed on those. And that's a lot referred to as the 1A portion of the site. What Jim is referring to is the 2B is what moves us up into the northern portion of the site. As you make your way up, Mosher Farm Drive, there's two data centers proposed along that. The former area that was retail on the original Phase 1, I'll call it, and development approvals is proposed to be a 200,000 square, 250,000 square foot data center. It's basically 125,000 square foot footprint, two stories. And the same for the other side of the road, for the north side of Mosher Farm, excuse me, Mosher Farm Drive. Similarly, another 125,000 square foot footprint, two stories. In addition to that, in line with what Jim was referring to as the power study, part of the consideration is the, what was required as a substation to draw that power down from the transmission lines and provide that power takeoffs for the different various buildings and their usage. So this is a layout prepared by BD Engineering, one of the team members of this group, that basically put together, mount to a 250-megawatt-designed substation that would provide power. And it's broken down into 50-megawatt units that basically eat the number of units necessary to support each facility would then drive the power to these particular buildings. So looking at the buildings, one of the things and part of the request we have tonight is the discussion about the situating the building. And what we looked at was, we looked at several things relative to the way the ordinance was developed. And then we saw some, I guess, in the iterations of the development of the ordinance, changes that got you to where you are today. And part of those considerations, you know, we think are good considerations relative to a data center and the nature of it. In particular, prior version of the draft, I assume it was a draft version of the ordinance, talked about positioning the data center and in particular, the mechanical support areas 200 feet away from adjacent residential zones, property lines. And that makes sense from point of view of positioning, basically, what would be the, I'll call the support service areas associated with the building away from the particular receptors, right? So these layouts here that you see on the page are basically designed to position the building predominantly between the, what would be the yard support area, which is this white area out here, between that and then the adjacent zones, adjacent residential zone in this case. And then this other building, again, just similar to the undeveloped land where the ponds are, we put the mechanical space behind the building. These buildings help to serve multiple purposes. They'll act as a, as a sound barrier themselves relative to a noise generation. But also, when you look at a data center, one of the things that's key about a data center, unlike a warehouse, or to do something here, like say, a retail, it doesn't have the kind of traffic associated with it in its use. Basically, the number of people that come in to operate the data center, maintain it, do any kind of services with it, all are on a, also a rather small scale compared to, let's say, compared to retail as an example. So instead of having, for example, a back of house that could be designed up against the residential with the loading bays and everything in their positions, we positioned the building and just the employee parking in the back. And then we did also some work on the grading, and I'll get to that in a moment, to additionally look to see away from the buffer, the building and the use from the neighboring properties. So I'll look, I'll bring it now to another plan, which is basically a conceptual grading plan. And what we did for this exercise is we did the grading associated with the primary building that I think is one of, you know, a critical one for discussion purposes, because this is the one that would be relative to, and I'll call it, in this case, it's referred to as building number two, and its proximity to the adjacent property line. So we did a grading plan for this particular building with the understanding of trying to reflect, you know, what's going on with the layout of the building and the adjacent properties. So we took cross-sections and I'll go to the actual, first, the plan, a little bit blow up of the plan, make it a little bit clearer. We took cross-sections, grading this to try and show what that profile will look like, looking from basically the Mosher Farm Drive up through into the, into the adjacent properties. And just for orientation on the building, the main road, we have, you know, this design you've seen previously, the Mosher Drive Farm, Mosher Farm Drive, excuse me, with elevations ranging 74, 74 here, with the building then at 485. So about a 10-foot difference, 11-foot difference in rise of the building footprint compared to the Mosher Farm Drive. And the road does go up and, and down across it. So that varies by maybe three, four feet across the building from the frontage point of view. The building itself was designed to have an access road to make its way around for the general parking and for access to the support area in the front. And also allow emergency vehicles also to traverse the perimeter of the building. So when you get to the back of the building and you consider the way the natural grades are out there today, basically, you're going up a hillside. And the hillside varies in elevations at the top end, from when I was talking about 474 on the road, up to 530 at the top end of the, the area, the limit of where we're looking to build out to. So that difference of the 474 up to the 530, the way we accomplished putting the building in there is we notched the building into the hillside. So basically, there'd be a wall proposed. And the grades that you see here are high at this northern tip and then drop down as they come down to the southeast and drop as they come down to the southwest. So the wall height here, for example, would be in the range of around 47 feet in height. And one thing I didn't refer to was this building's anticipated to be in around a 50-foot building height range. So if we look at the 50-foot building height, the northerly corner is basically about even with the elevation of the top of the wall, the top of the building are in proximity to one another. And this then drops off as you make your way toward the southeast. So the building itself, the wall height going from 47 feet down to zero at the far east end, would act as a portion of what I'll refer to as buffering the building itself. You get down to the east end and then at the, the southeast end, excuse me, and we're about proximity to the elevation of the adjacent roadway network. We're in, in range of 483, 483 is about the, maybe a foot or two above the roadway here. This corner, traversing this corner then goes into, basically, it's in, instead of being cutted to the mountain, now this is sitting in a slight fill, because again, we're traversing a large topographic change across the site with a long, flat footprint, basically. So we have that deep cut on the north and a little bit of fill on the south to balance, basically, put the building in a way where we can then tie the grades in to the adjacent areas. So part of that, when you start looking at it from a cross-section point of view, I'll bring up a cross-section drawing here. So these three cross-sections represent the north, central, and call it southeast portion of the building. So if I start at the north end, basically, the building itself, the 50-foot high building, the footprint that's on the site plan, along with then what is the mechanical yard area, would basically be cut down into the hillside. The natural grade is this dash line, if, if this can't, if this is not visible, I can zoom this in further if it helps. Just interrupt me at any point if there's any type of comment you need to, for me to make the presentation. So as an example, that wall cut into the existing conditions, notching that in, parking be at the lower level here. The building then would be positioned where you see here relative to the adjacent grades. And then the equipment yard, making its way from the building down to Mosher Farm Drive, would basically be stepped down from there into the, to the, towards the center, towards Mosher Farm Drive, excuse me. The households that are adjacent, there's a existing residential structure. And I'm going to point to this here, but I'm going to go back to the grading plan for a moment just to show you where that is. So if I'm looking at the north cross-section AA, this is the resident that is at, is at the tail end of this cross-section AA, through the wall section that covers the, cut into the ground, building, canoe yard and, sorry, and Mosher Farm Drive. So part of the discussion tonight is that we look back at the original ordinance relative to the buffer. And we looked at that buffer zone that we'd be planting would basically provide a mechanism, part of, this is shown, and just for reference, these are shown on initial planting heights. This is not mature trees. This is just an illustration of showing that trees in the 14-foot range, you know, in this area, and then obviously would be intended to grow, would provide for a visual break for the building. At the same time, more importantly, the building itself, the actual data center, will block the visual to the mechanical yard. And that has two purposes, one, the visual to the mechanical yard, two, the sound associated with the mechanical yard. Those two items are part of this design and what we had considered. And there'll be some discussion, we have Ben Mueller will talk about the sound side of this in a bit. So looking at it from a point of view of what is the experience from the neighboring properties, this gives you an illustration of the positioning of the building, notched into the hillside, working with the buffer that we think would be appropriate for this in terms of the adjacency. And then how does that translate to, you know, the position going down the hill to what you would see? So I'm going to go to the middle cross-section now, which is now, going back to the site plan, first, reading plan for a second. So there's the next resident down, making your way towards this, on the right here is Music Center Drive. So this section, EB, is cut through that, through that resident. And the section CC coming through the building and then again down to Mosher Drive Farm, Mosher Farm Drive, I keep flipping that, I apologize. It's another example here. So this building acts in a lower position to the building, building itself. The landscape buffer would be built as well, but in this case, there's less of the building, I'll say, the top of the building that would be seen compared to the section further to the north. The building itself, and Jim hadn't had a chance to discuss this, but ultimately, the goal here is, and you do have these architectural standards in your ordinance, which provides for this kind of measure, is to make the building look like an attractive building, more like an office building than, I would say, than a warehouse kind of scenario. So the, so the element of the building itself, providing something that is an attractive building that has that visual cue is also another piece of the overall puzzle to, you know, how do we integrate this into the area and, and make it, you know, appealing in that respect? So this section, as an example, you can see the building's lower, the wall height's lower, the existing residential, excuse me, building is lower. The wall height is lower, and now this, this would be more of the building. And again, the tree heights here would mitigate portions of this, maybe the parking lot element of it. But you would see some of the building from this elevation. And then we move down to, whoop, go ahead, sorry.
How close, how close are nearby residents?
So as an example, this one here, I can give you some quick measurements. So if I'm, I'm on the north end, let me just set the scale here for a second.
Roughly, doesn't have to be exact.
Yeah, this will just, this is a quick way to get a real number, I just didn't have, I should have set this up before I logged on, but I'll do that real quick, take a moment. Okay, so as an example, the northerly building is a distance of, and I'm going to do like the closest edge of the building to our building, is 300, and I call it 400 feet, 398 feet.
You know, the sound travels like, I mean, up to miles, right?
From a sound point of view, there's a lot more there than I think from a discussion than just comment, no offense to the comment, but I'll say, sound itself in terms of its attenuation and how it operates and what we're doing to position the buildings and the, and the mechanical equipment to block the sound and other measures like the screening and other features like that, are all geared towards looking to mitigate the sound and just.
It all sounds good, it all sounds good on paper, but that's not going to help the sound travel over a mile.
Yeah.
I'd also like to interject if I could, John, just because he sounded very knowledgeable.
Hey, I'm.
Sorry.
We have an extra.
Mr. Harkowski and Mr. Stangle, we got, we, we, let's let, we'll let this go on for a little bit here.
Well, I just, I was just going to ask because he sounded very knowledgeable about the water and the electricity portions of this project and what it would do to local residents with the water usage and the electricity.
Yeah, so just from a big picture point of view.
He sounds very knowledgeable, I just wanted to, to.
So.
You're going to keep it, so I want to hear it. So the, the, the short answer is, the short answer is this, this is, this is all nice, John, and you, and you have your drawing, but there's, obviously, there's no tenant operator yet, correct?
Yeah, so let, let me just, I can, I can put that into a nutshell, Scott, I think where you're going, no matter who the operator is, no matter who the tenant is, they're obligated to meet your ordinance requirements in that respect, in terms of when we talk about sound. So I'm not, so, so there's a lot to, to, and I apologize, this, Maszkewski, I apologize, not saying wrong, but, and Mr. Stangy, Stangle, sorry. With respect to those comments, a lot of what you're asking is, you know, what is it going to be? And the question really. you know, what is it going to be? And the question really is answered by the fact that it has to be compliant. And we're talking noise and and then that element of this project, it has to be compliant with the ordinance. That's not something that, you know, so for example, when equipment gets specified, the specification for the equipment has to meet the same goals. When they look at the analysis of how this actually operates in its condition, the the operation at the point of of analysis has to meet the goal. I can't, we're not talking about something here and there's there's equipment. It's all variations on how, what kind of equipment you can buy. But the bottom line is that any kind of approval of this down the road after this goes through land development and everything else will be conditioned on meeting those same that same criteria. So I I know you say it sounds nice now, but it won't happen. That's really not a fair statement because you're not looking at the fact that they're obligated to meet that requirement. So it's at the end of the day, that's really the, that's really the requirement of the project. And that's where the jurisdiction of the town gets to impose that particular restriction.
Understood.
Again, um, oh, we're both doing it. Sorry, Justin, go ahead. Um, the the problem is that what I'm wondering.
Yeah, you got this, Mirokowski. Otherwise, I have to silence you. Please, you just have to wait your turn. Please.
I'm I'm very sorry. I'm on Zoom, so maybe there's a delay. I apologize.
Are you anticipating that being an AI data center or a traditional data center? What are you looking at?
It could be either the 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 market. Yeah, the market will, the market will dictate what it is relative to the users. And then that will.
Because they're very different items.
Yes, it's it's the 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 difference is what you consider the 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 power density of the particular box in terms of what the what the demands are. So, you know, to just kind of put in a nutshell, the box has to be reverse engineered to the available resources. So in other words, the the density, the the water usage, the electric usage has to be basically backed into whatever that availability is. And the market has variations in how data centers are built throughout the country in terms of the technology they use to achieve those goals. So it's 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 not a fair statement to say that every data center is the same. They're all going to create the same situation. It's a very diverse tech technology-based project, uh, or I'll say design base that has allows for a range of scenarios. So you can't, it's not a nutshell to say every data center is going to do this and and this is what you gotta, you know, you're gonna, this is all you're gonna get. It's so to your question, Scott.
Yeah. What do you guys think marketing this too?
Retail colocation, retail colocation could be one scenario. Um, you could get to enterprise if if basically if the users uh see the power that's available and it serves their their purpose. But again, it's it's uh the reason for this meeting, the reason we wanted to bring presentation to this meeting was the fact that we see a lot of churn in what people are considering to be issues associated with data centers. And that churn is basically a lot of internet stuff thrown into the batch. Here's what we heard. Here's what we see. Here's what this is. And and what's not usually discussed is what are the options that you can do to quote-unquote mitigate the concerns that you have? And that's really what I'm trying to bring to the table today is positioning the building as an example, like I'm talking about here. Regardless of the user, the goal is from a planning and a zoning planning point of view is to take the best layout that we can do in terms of adjacency and what we're looking to do for mitigating those concerns and and show that to you. That's really the goal here, not to not to say that, okay, this is going to be XYZ data center. So therefore, they're going to have this particular brand of equipment sitting in their mechanical yard. That all has to come to fruition based on what Jim said earlier, that he can get a tenant to actually or a buyer, you know, end user to look at the site, you know, and and know that it's viable. Then the equipment and everything else gets spec'd to your requirements. In other words, what your end compliance requirements are, that's how the system gets designed. And it can it can vary depending on what the, you know, again, if it, what the who the user is, but it'll have all all of the users, no matter who they are, have to comply. So we we like to.
Yeah. So the back of these buildings here, um, yeah, if it was retail, as you suggested, you would have uh, you know, trailer backups, et cetera. Our intention would be, and we will bring on an architect to bring forward elevations, but that's going to be an a very attractive office building type appearance with a ton of landscaping along that route with the fact that Lanny has creatively said, a lot of that building is going to be submerged into the ground. So we're going to really work hard to make this uh, you know, attractive, much more attractive than if it was a retail, you know, project which would face the road.
All right, thanks. Let me ask this, Rob. We don't have to do anything in particular tonight, right? Is this a sketch plan?
No, it's a sketch plan and frankly, and I'm not trying to make any left-handed comments, all the work that's been done, but I'm not sure why it's here. Usually a sketch plan is, we need a variance. What do you think?
Right. Setback. We're going to get to that, too.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go there for that. That that's that's part of tonight's request.
Been an hour and I haven't heard anything.
Right. So so I apologize. I'll I'll accelerate that component of mine and I'll wrap it up.
Maybe at this point, uh, we introduce Ben Riller from um Oscar Guard to talk about, because there was earlier conversations about
Sure.
the noise and everything. This company are experts in that field.
So Jim, let me, I'll lead off the Ben. I'm just gonna, I just, I just want to answer Mr. Carisex's question really quickly. What we're asking here is that consideration, we designed this in accordance with the original ordinance that maintained a fifty-foot landscape buffer, eighty-foot setback for the building proper. And we know that with the new ordinance that that's not the case. And we designed the mechanical yard it really to what was the interim ordinance or the draft ordinance. So that is the real ask tonight, consideration of and based on the scenario that we're proposing, the nature of the layout, what it what it requires to utilize the original, what is basically the original uh master plan uh layout for the uh offsets and the uh buffers. So that that's the, that's the long and short of everything I'm describing here, getting to a point where that's what we're asking for. Okay, all right. I apologize, Jim. So go ahead, go ahead, Ben.
Uh, so Ben, why don't you introduce yourself and your company and talk about, you know, sound and noise uh for relationship to these data centers?
Sure, I I and I'll 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 keep it brief also, but uh Ben Muller, um, the principal of Ostergard Acoustical Associates, we're we're one of those um mysterious acoustic consultants that were discussed earlier in the meeting. Uh, we we are out there and and we do know how to do things in in different ways, so I hope to try to shed some light on that uh just in in our brief discussion here. You know, we have multiple of of ordinances that are in play uh which you're fully familiar with. We were even talking about them tonight. Uh, I'm kind of glad I was able to eavesdrop in on that because uh some of the questions that I had on on the intent uh were answered. So your main noise code is under chapter ten, uh, which is known as ordinance two forty-eight. Uh, in there you have uh that a specific A or overall levels not to equal or exceed. Uh, that's something that we commonly see. Uh, and I I believe one of your references for development of your code was the New Jersey State Code, uh, which is where our firm is based. So a lot of this is is a very um not only meaningful, but but acceptable uh in my eyes uh for commercial properties that we have around the boundary. Uh, sound emissions are required to not exceed sixty-five. And the reason for sixty-five is because that is the threshold uh for the speech interference. So if something was higher in level than sixty-five, that would cause me to elevate my voice, strain it, and and that's where sixty-five uh is selected from. The, on the contrary, if we have residential receptors, the date limit is sixty-five, but then at nighttime, it's substantially knocked down to fifty. And that fifty is then more aligned to preserving uh and uh minimizing any sleep interference, preserving sleep. I I did see in your ordinance, though, and I thought it was a typo, but you kind of touched upon it earlier that these limits were uh pertaining to both A-weighted and C-weighted. So first that I've seen it that way, usually A-weight and C-weight get different limits, uh, but I understand your intent is to try to keep uh low frequency in check and and I I haven't, while I haven't seen it in this uh method before, I I understand, I don't think it's it it's out of line. Uh, I just didn't, I thought it was a typo. I I found ordinance two forty-eight when it was passed. Uh, but then also on your E-code, uh, there seemed to have been a couple of letters that changed, and I thought that that was the case. Sorry, I I digress. Um, there are impulsive limits, right, for sound sources that are less than a second duration. Those are your claps or your bangs. Uh, that's a much higher limit for that. We we won't have anything like that at at a data center facility. Um, and then you also have a discussion then that that noise, uh, these code limits don't apply during an emergency, and that's going to relate to uh certain elements of the data center, which I'll talk about in a second. Uh, the other thing which is uh where the town touches upon it is under ordinance two sixty, which is the the data center ordinance specifically in the zoning. And in there, uh, we tried to go one step further i- in terms of regulations. So we have our our belt that is chapter ten and we have some suspenders that are being added to it. So in there, we then require a a two-phase approach to sound studies, and and we talked about it a little earlier tonight as well. Uh, but to require submission of a of a study that shows uh the prospective compliance. And that would be something that would be done during the the land development phase of it, but um we would uh do analyses and and coastal modeling to show that what we were providing meets that. And then later on, you have a requirement for an as-built uh study, which I'm assuming means that you would do a post-instruction sound study, uh, which is also common and and completely feasible. Uh, there was a, I'll I'll just weigh in on your you were having a discussion uh before the meeting or at the part of the early on about how do you do that? Well, quite simply, for certain elements, you can do an on-off test and then you would be able to determine what the contribution of the noise source in question is, and that would be directly com- uh comparable to your code. Your your code is is the emissions of the source. It has nothing to do with the ambient. Uh, it's it's regardless of it. And if it's a noise source that can't be turned off, um, it could be a data center. I guess once it's online, uh, doesn't want to go offline or or the substation, for example, would be a site, a source that you can't turn on and off readily. And and what we would do uh as as a consultant, a a consultant would be, you take a measurement of of it in the area of importance, and then we go into another location setback further away that doesn't have the influence of the noise source, and then we would be able to subtract those using uh the 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 acoustical logarithmic arithmetic uh to find out what the contribution of our sources. So it sounds complicated, but there's always a path forward and um it it's really not as um as difficult as it sounds. Um, so again, with our 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 data center ordinance, uh, we have the belt suspenders with the two phases. And then uh I also saw then that under this, the the later part of the ordinance two sixty, uh, you introduced the concept of having octave band uh limits for it. And and again, with the discussion earlier on, the uh concept of of making sure that we minimize low-frequency content. Uh, while there was, there's definitely merit in all of this, it looks like that you borrowed from a a code that uses outdated octave band metrics. And so those, the form that it's in there is not utilized by modern sound level uh monitors. Um, the anti-standard updated in the nineteen sixties, and to this day, we still see that old, we call that old octave band. Uh, we still see that uh propagated throughout ordinances all over the place. So when you're looking into updates of things, uh, you you might take that opportunity to do so. And i- i- in our role, I would probably adopt New Jersey's octave band limits as a as an additional uh measure to to meet the intent of what you're you're trying to accomplish here. Um, and then lastly, the data center ordinance talks about other factors, which I I would have brought up anyway. But it says that when we're near residential zone, that generators are going to be a critical component and that we want to um only test them during the daytime periods and it provides uh hours of of allowance. Uh, and that the generators are for backup only. And the the backup only is critical because if they were to be used as a sole source of power, then they would be operating all the time, and that's certainly something that we don't want. We want to use them as an emergency uh condition in the case of of a blackout uh of 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 that. And that's also why applications like this are often paired with a a substation um component that serves directly them. And so this this site becomes ideal because it's near a high-power right-of-way. They would take that power down to grade, throw it into transformers that would then convert it to be on a usable scale for the data centers to plug into directly. Um, we also have some vibration criteria. It 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 says that you shouldn't have perceptible vibration beyond the property line. I've never been involved in a situation uh other than the uh an elevated railroad, you know, passing uh by houses within fifty feet of a perceptible vibration uh situation. Uh, there's, there's plenty of earth here that that vibration goes into the ground and then gets dissipated. And there wouldn't be a situation where you'd have a high enough magnitude of sound that would result in airborne noise to then convert back into a a a structure-borne vibration. Uh, we don't have anything of reference uh the of use here to reference from Monroe County or the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, but I do find that your code has a a a great infrastructure that would allow us to follow it uh to ensure the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So just to give a crash course in what we expect uh as the a data center is is treated with respect to our noise code, data centers are going to have um some contribution of noise from just your normal rooftop unit and exhaust fans. Uh, that that would be the case with any retail or an office space, and those would be to 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 serve to condition the air uh for those uh inhabited parts of of the building. Uh, for the data center uh technical side of things, for the servers and all of that IT infrastructure, you rely on uh chillers and those chillers can either be air-cooled or water-cooled. There's a couple of different versions of them, but they all produce uh noise in a similar way. We have uh, we're trying to shed heat from the building and we want to do so by passing uh that hot air uh over radiators and then using fans to blow that hot air away as we exchange that heat. And so a data center will routinely have a series of chillers that are going to be designed to do just that. For this project specifically, because we know we have our eastern building is quite close to residential zone, we're also and also considering the fact that we're cutting into the earth to drop the building height, it would not be prudent for us to put chillers and and extensive equipment on the rooftop because we would just be bringing it down to eye level for certain residences. So for this uh project specifically, for our path forward, we would see all of this equipment uh to be located or the chillers and the generators to be located in the equipment yard that uh John had made reference to. It's going to be one of our many acoustical tactics and strategies that were used in the project. The other elements to talk about would be the emergency generators. Um, these are, you know, normally a diesel or or natural gas-driven engines that are placed inside acoustical enclosures, and they're designed to kick in, use that fuel source to to provide energy to a site that is is in loss of it. Um, loss of power is is certainly an emergency situation. And your code touches upon that. So the way we treat a data center is that when we're doing our routine maintenance for the generators, we would have a series of them be tested again during daytime hours like the ordinance recommends uh and we support. Uh, but then that in the instance of a of a an emergency, we acknowledge then that those generators might operate at nighttime, the power outage could be at nighttime. But because that's an emergency condition, that's something that's never expected to happen, yet yet for a long period of time, uh, that would fall under under that. And that that's that's a a common uh way of of how these sites are um being integrated. Uh, the other thing to talk about just briefly is the substation that would be designed by others. The 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 power utility would come in and and work on that. Uh, my firm works on all kinds of of electrical substations, so we're very familiar with it. So as part of our efforts here, we would put in something that makes sense for it, but even though the substation appears to be large, much of that equipment is just the overhead wires and connectors and bus structure. Uh, the 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 substation is going to have transformers that will contribute a low-level hum, and then they have cooling fans to help shed heat. Uh, but we're we're several hundred feet away. The majority of my substation work uh uh where it becomes a noise interest is a picture, New Jersey right-of-ways that are a hundred feet wide, and we're putting a substation in the middle of them with houses on either side. And that's where it becomes more critical. I I don't anticipate there to be any sort of issues at all or or considerations regarding the substation um.
Yeah, yeah, this is sketch, but we have to move this.
Okay. So thank you, Ben. You're you're summarizing with excellent.
Oh, hey, I'll say, you want one comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, Robert.
Thank you for your analysis of our sound ordinance um in the in the present draft of the amendment for data centers. I believe that the sound requirements were copied from sources by someone who knows almost nothing about sound. I think you know quite a bit and as one of the supervisors, if you would provide us with some notes of what you think would be reasonable to put in the ordinance, we'd be very happy to to look at that.
Very good. Good. Thank you, Ben. Uh, thank you, Ben. Um, I would like Doug Olmstead, uh, to comment here on you better, sure. What, what, which is always a, a big subject with this, Doug.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Doug Olmstead, a consultant for Jig De Petrus and a part of this overall team. With respect to the water usage, data centers can use anywhere from zero gallons per megawatt to about 6,500 gallons per megawatt, which in this case would be anywhere between zero water usage for that end of the business, up to a million and a half gallons per day. We have a will serve letter from B C R A that allows for the overall size of 138 gallons per day, 138,000 gallons per day.
Doug?
We've, yes.
Sorry, clarification, 138,000 or 30? Okay, thank you.
We've also have a, a letter from the sewer authority that they can provide us with water from their treatment facility. Because that also can be used to help take care of the water usage. The advantage of that, if we chose to go in that direction would mean that instead of being dumped into the Delaware River, it would be used at our facility in order to cool the, uh, the units and then allow that water that's no longer going into the Delaware River to be used for further economic development throughout the community because the water is being taken from what's ultimately going in there now. So we're very early in the, in the stage. We're not anywhere near the design stage. The point is that we have with the technologies that exist today, we have the ability to not be, uh, to work with the utilities to provide the water that we may need for this project, given the scope of the different types of design scenarios that exist. And just overall, Scott, the reason why we're here so early is because data centers are so fresh in everybody's minds. And we started looking at this over a year ago. We felt it was time just to kind of get your input and to provide you with what our thought process is now, because everybody's got a long ways to go. If this is going to be a go project, then we just wanted as much input as possible throughout the design of the project. I'm done with water.
Thank you.
This is really our presentation for this evening. We have work to do, uh, studies to do, architecturalists to do. Um, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, I've been here in Smithville for 10 years. Um, I'd like to feel that D E P G stands for quality development. We feel we're part of this community, the buildings we built, whether it be a Wawa or a St. Luke's building or first-class nature. Um, we, we built roads and helped traffic here. Um, so I, I want to assure you that this project will be done right and will be done as a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, please?
Yeah, I was just going to get to the public comment here. So maybe we'll start now. Go ahead, Brad.
Just to review, how much power are you trying to secure to be able to attract end users?
We have a commitment from mid-end for 150 megawatts that will, could be expanded to 250 megawatts over several years.
And, okay.
To follow, to follow up on that, and that may help you, Scott, too, with, with the comment that you had. This study that's underway right now by the power company, we know that we can get at least 150. The purpose of this study at great expense is to find out how much, when, and the cost to bring that power to the site. And then it's based on that report which takes about six months to pre- prepare. That gives us, because it has shelf life, that gives us about six months to then find an end user that will be able to decide what price range and what they're able to, to go for. Then they'll, then we'll know whether it's a Google or whether it's a, uh, um, a company that specializes in just storage for people, you know, data storage.
Yeah, they're very different kinds of stuff.
They're very different types.
Very different.
That's correct. And depending on the type of cooling that you go to, the, the lower the water use, the higher the energy needed to do that. So when you get, go that, it's
Your stand.
It's the design is a long way off. We just want your input as soon as possible.
All right.
Um, in, in a package that I handed out is notes from Ben on the crystal gold studies and, uh, as well as copies of, uh, Lang's topography elevations.
Thank you.
One question.
Really? On this power station here. Now, this is all exposed. Is there any way you're going to mitigate the ugliness of that, sir?
No, a lot of answering, a lot of answering.
Which, are you talking about the substation?
Yeah.
Just apologize, just to come back on, I can put that back on the screen. I apologize, but the substation design will be, it'll be very similar in terms of its being notched into the hillside. Um, so if you were looking at what was originally the same concept for the warehouse, for the, uh, data center, I apologize. Um, the, you'll see a similar type of embedded into the hillside because the grades of this will have to be relatively flat in a similar fashion to allow for service around the facility. So they, for access around the, the various points of equipment. So it'll be notched in, in a similar fashion.
This all sounds, this all sounds great for the team and all, but how does this benefit the residents of Smithfield Township?
It provides a tax ratable and doesn't put a burden on the school system. Um, basically providing revenue for the town without the, uh, the added resource that, for example, other types of development would put on to you. So the best example is school systems.
And doesn't have much. Yeah, but it's also, they said that, um, water versus electricity. So, um, depending on the person who's the end buyer or whatever, um, it's water versus electricity that we're losing or increasing here?
It's, I don't think it's a matter of losing. It's, it's a matter of what's out there being used by that, but not taking away from your, it's not going to take away from residential use of power. So it's not.
No, 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 but I mean, it will take it away from us.
It's going to rise the utility cost. It's going to cost more for the residents.
Yeah, it's going to cost more.
That's not a.
Either, either aspect.
I want to correct, I want to correct that, that's.
And it's bad for the environment. There's no positives.
It's very bad.
Except line in your pockets, the team.
Well, a- a- anecdotally, you know, those kind of comments, you know, at the end of the day, there's a lot of different things that are not being considered when you think about your town and how the town will live in terms of the years ahead. The less you do, the more, the more you become, as a, like, uh, you know, anti-development, you look at the idea that your town now has to rely on those taxes to provide services that cost more over the years and increase in all those things that you, you want as your tax, taxes to pay for, but yet you provide no means for those taxes to be implemented, increased to cover those increased costs. So it's just consider that, look around, look around at, at, at municipalities that are successful. And how they're being successful by putting, by building ratable things, you know, again, this doesn't put a demand.
I do appreciate that comment, John. Um, what I would like to say is that, like, most people need power and water to live also.
Yep.
Um, so I don't know which one you guys are planning. Also, because you're not explaining exactly who is the end buyer. So where's the end game here? Because it seems to me, it seems to me that either way, um, residents lose on this.
Yeah, but the Chelsea, that's, that's what I even started with. That's where, that's many steps down the road with these guys. They don't have anybody. We're not there. So.
Well, they're selling, they're trying to sell something here, but they don't have nothing good to offer residents.
They're not trying to sell something. They're updating something. They're the ones that have to sell something to somebody else. They have to sell the township. They gotta go find somebody else to sell something to.
The data center is a horrible idea. Anybody with a, with a mind knows that. You know what's great for the community though? The back nine motocross track that's right here.
All right. I make a motion, we adjourn. We're done for tonight.
Anyone else want any comment?
I thought it is.
We're done. No, no data center. Bring back the track. Back nine MX. Let's go.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion.
Okay, good night. That was a lot of waste of time.
Thank you for your time tonight.